Okay. Good afternoon, good evening, early evening. Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the Tuesday, December 16th, 2008, joint meeting of the Glendale City Council and the Glendale Redevelopment Agency. Mr. Kosakian, let's call the roll.
Council members Najarian.
Here.
Quintero.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Yusefian.
Mayor Drayman.
Here.
And for the redevelopment agency.
Agency members Drayman.
Here.
Quintero.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Yusefian. Chairman Najarian.
Here.
All right. And let's hear the report, please, Mr. Kosakian.
The agenda for the December 16th, 2008, joint public meeting of the Glendale City Council and the Glendale Redevelopment Agency was posted on Thursday, December 11th, 2008, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you very much. And can we hear the item at 1A, B, and C?
Certainly, at 1A. We do have a public hearing today. It's the Director of Development Services regarding remodel of Rafi's Place Restaurant, located at 211 East Broadway, and the expansion of the restaurant into 205 East Broadway. 1A is an agency motion approving a 45-space parking exception for the 205 East Broadway, subject to findings and conditions. 1B is an agency motion approving Stage 1 and Stage 2 design review, subject to comments and conditions from the city's principal urban designer and the agency. And at 1C is council motion approving conditional use permit for sale services and onsite consumption of alcoholic beverages.
Thank you, Mr. Kosakian. Let me, for starters, open the public hearing. Who are we going to? Mr. Lanzafain?
I can start.
You were looking up at the moment, so let me go to you.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Chairman, members of the agency, and the city council. This is a joint public hearing. This is one of the rare occasions where we have wrapped up several of the approvals, project approvals, into one. This is a streamlined process that you adopted with the downtown specific plan. In this case, there is a parking exception and design review that we are bringing to the redevelopment agency. A design review because there is a change in the character, architectural character, and that is usually the defining element for us to bring that forward to you rather than do it administratively. We also have a conditional use permit for alcohol use that we are bringing for the city council's consideration. I will, before I turn it over to Mark Berry for a little more detailed report, I will apologize upfront. We did find a typo in the chart. In the first line of the parking requirements, it says 13 at 27 spaces per thousand. That should be 2.7 spaces per thousand, but the calculations are correct, and I will just apologize with that while I turn the microphone to Mr. Berry.
Mr. Berry. Good afternoon, Mayor Drayman, Chairman Najarian, members of the agency. Rafi's Place Restaurant is located at 211 East Broadway. They've been at that location for 25 years, and over time, they've expanded from a small storefront to eventually occupy the entire property. Rafi's Place is again looking to expand, and this time, it's into 205 East Broadway. This is the property that neighbors immediately to the west. The 205 property is two stories, just under 5,300 square feet. It's currently occupied by a law firm and a small café on the ground floor. Rafi's is proposing to expand the restaurant into the ground floor and use the second floor as office space. Also, as part of the expansion, Rafi's would like to add about 700 square feet to the ground floor to allow their existing kitchen to expand. And all about 55% of the ground floor in the 205 building would be for new or expanded kitchen facilities. The other 45% would be new indoor seating area. The expansion of the restaurant will require approval of a parking exception for the change in use to a full-service restaurant. Per the code, the project would create 6,000 square feet of new full-service restaurant use, creating demand of 60 spaces at the calculation of 10 spaces per thousand square feet. They do get a credit of 15 spaces for the current office and retail use, so when you deduct the 15 spaces, the code would require a 45-space parking exception. Staff actually believes that 45 is a high number, given that the second floor would continue as office space. The way the code reads is that if you have an internal staircase that connects the first floor and second floor, then you would consider the second floor a continuation of the ground floor, which is the restaurant use. So if you look at the actual proposed usage of the space and focus only on the ground floor, which is 3,500 square feet, that's 35 spaces, take a credit of eight spaces, the amount would be 27 spaces. And staff believes that that number is actually more reflective of the project demand. Another mitigating factor is that the applicant is proposing to reconfigure the parking lot located behind the 205 building to create eight spaces, which will be used for food pickup and valet service. That currently occurs in the alley, so moving out of the alley would create a more efficient operation and kind of address some of the parking issues that have occurred in the alley. Traffic has reviewed the request, and based on recent analysis of the usage of the marketplace parking structure and the exchange, they believe that the additional parking demand could be met in either parking structure. Staff is recommending approval of the parking exception, subject to three conditions. One is that the exception is limited only to the use. The other is that the second floor cannot be used for restaurant space, it must be used for office space, and also that the restaurant will fall under the new zoning code requirements for a full-service restaurant. As Phil mentioned, the applicant is also requesting a conditional use permit for the onsite sale, service, and consumption of alcohol. Rafi's currently does not have a CUP, but they do serve alcohol. This is because the restaurant predates the requirement, the code requirement that they have a CUP. Because they are expanding, they lose their nonconforming status, and they must receive a CUP. The request for the CUP was forwarded to other city departments. There was no concerns or objections received. The application with the appropriate findings, and the motion is attached for your consideration. As part of the expansion, the applicant would like to do a facade improvement to the existing restaurant with the intent of visually integrating the two buildings, so some of the design features of the 205 building would be brought over to the existing restaurant. Because these improvements only involve facade changes, we're presenting the combined Stage 1 and Stage 2 design submittal. The facade was reviewed by the city's urban designer. A number of modifications, kind of minor modifications, were made to the original submission to address the urban designer's concerns about the perceived mass of the building. Those changes were made in your packet, and the urban designer recommends approval of the design submission as submitted. The applicant's architect is here to give you a brief summary of the facade improvements, and before I turn it over to him, I'd just like to summarize that staff is recommending the agency adopt the motions approving the parking exception and the motion approving the design submittal, and that the council adopt the motion approving the CUP for alcohol. concludes my part.
Okay. Mr. Berry, thank you, and I know there was not a single PowerPoint in that presentation, so I thank you for that, too. Yes.
Just noting for the record that, based on the presentation made by Mr. Berry, there is a revised motion in front of you for the alcohol CUP. That's for the city council's consideration. Please note that based on Mr. Berry's presentation, that condition number one and condition number three that you see in that motion will also be included in the parking exception motion to have consistent both, both of those motions. That would be the parking exception for the agency's consideration.
Okay.
Want to make that, note that for the record.
Thank you.
So there are two revised, the parking exception motion will be moved as revised, and the motion by the city council approving the CUP for alcohol would be moved as revised.
Thank you very much, Ms. Benmud. Hello? How are you, Mr. Kosakian?
Fine, thank you.
Please.
Mayor Drayman, Chairman Najarian, a member of the council. My name is Haran Desarkisian, practicing architect in Glendale, 220 South Kenwood, Suite 320, and I'm the architect for this building. Essentially, the program was rather simple. 10 years ago, I designed the building that the lawyers occupy. It used to be also occupied by some, a law firm in Glendale a long time ago who went, essentially retired, and I did this building at the time. And when we did this, we somewhat looked to the building, which is on the corner of Maryland, because it is an old building and has some interesting brick detailing. Without copying it, we sort of did a more contemporary version of that building. Later on, where I was approached to design Rafi Bar Kitchen, and both of them are Rafi's, so this may get a little confusing. The first names of the, both the owners of the building is Rafi, but Rafi's Place Restaurant purchased this building, and he requested that in some manner, we continue, because he liked the building, continue the feeling of this building over his front to make his building somewhat more prominent. He has been in Glendale for, I believe, 15 years himself, but before that was also a restaurant by the name of Rafi, coincidentally. So there's been three Rafis in a row in this particular story. It used to be a small sandwich place in one corner, and there were some other retail operations in that courtyard, but it's one of the most beautiful courtyards in Glendale. It's a very attractive restaurant, very popular restaurant. What we're doing essentially is, first of all, we're going to open the left-hand side, as you know it, to be similar to the right-hand side in the courtyard, so more of the open space is going to be created. The closed restaurant part is going to be essentially housed in the Rafi, Mr. Rafi Rolfalian's office. The lawyers' building in here, and the upstairs, which is presently office, will continue to be used as an office building. A problem that has been created recently for this particular neighborhood is that by the closure of the continuation of the alley going to Louise, which used to be another alternate way of getting into that area, which now is blocked, has created a huge parking problem, particularly for the law firm, because the one access is used by delivery trucks, by pickups, and all the clients and everything else, and therefore, at times, one has to wait behind the truck or something else to gain access to that parking lot. So the two of them got together between them and explored this how to, how this can be resolved. We had numerous conversations with the city, and there were some other proposals, but none of them really worked out. Finally, they decided between them that one had to go and the other one had to purchase it. It made sense for the restaurant, which is more, you know, location anchored, or it is related, to stay, and the attorney to go and find another location for himself. So he bought the building, and we've done a design. Essentially, it's a front, it's a perforated front, because the tree is so beautiful, and I didn't want to block the tree, so it's really a front that has perforations in the middle. There's a large opening on the ground floor, somewhat emulating the same kind of an entry. It's a folded brick kind of an entry, and it was 15 feet originally, but the city planning department and Allen requested that we widen that, so we widened it to the present opening, which is 20 feet between the buildings. There were a couple of other comments, and they're all incorporated in the package that you have. There was one further comment made that perhaps we should explore the alternative of making the top flat, essentially, and not having this indentation that we have. We explored that, and the result was not very successful. So I think we all agree that this is a better articulation of that particular facade. The access to the parking would be from the alley, and we have now put a barrier between the 12-foot alley going to Maryland and the parking that will occur behind the restaurant for the pedestrians to have a better safety to walk to Maryland, because it's foreseen that with the occupants coming in the corner building, there would be many people using the alley to go to Maryland, a large number of people going to Maryland, and therefore, the safety of those people is an issue, and therefore, we have taken all the activity of parking, valet parking, off of the alleys into the private property with this proposal. Essentially, it's a scheme that is good for the city, and it's good for Rafi, and it's good for the attorney, because it solves its parking problem.
Okay. All right. Thank you, and I'm sure there will be some questions for you.
I have also a color board in here, just for your information, which really expands the existing palette of the attorney building onto this front edge.
Phil, if you would, perhaps my colleagues would like to look at that. Thank you.
And there is a model here as well. This is actually a model made 10 years ago. I did that 10 years ago, and you can see, we have duplicated the same size perforations with the same material. This is the opening to the courtyard, and they would have a rolling rail to secure that night. These are only openings, totally openings in the wall, so you can see the tree, which is behind. And all the materials are the same as what is on the attorney's building.
I'm sure there will be in a bit. Thank you, Mr. Kosakian. Okay. Our next speaker is Rafi Rolfalian, followed by Herbert Milano.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor.
Good afternoon.
Councilman Quintero, Councilman Dever, Councilman Najarian, city attorney, city secretary, and the rest of you. I don't want to go on with the names. This, very briefly, this was not something I chose to do. I built this building. I wanted to retire there. I went to Glendale College in 1971, '72, and I wanted to retire in that building. We actually built the 205 building around our needs. I had a law firm for 30 years, and we have a setup that sort of suits our needs. I love this building. Earlier this year, the city, and we did object to that, however, for whatever reason, the alley, one of the alleys leading to the parking lot was closed. That leaves no turnaround space in the back. That leaves a singular alley leading in and out of that entire back area, so to speak, which serves the theaters, services the theaters, services a couple restaurants, services the Way to Happiness Center, the Broadway, what used to be the Broadway Bar and Grill. All the utility vehicles all have to go through that one singular alley. A lot of these large vehicles back in into the alley, so it creates a nightmare for me. The GRA was good enough to talk with us, to listen to us, and we went back and forth. I never wanted this to be an adversarial situation, and they can attest to that. We said, I need a solution. I have to do something here, because now my clients are asking to meet me in another facility. They don't want to come here, because they can't come here. So we came up with a number of different solutions. None of them seemed to work, for whatever reason. Either the GRA did not like it, the planning, the traffic didn't like it. Someone, somewhere objected. Finally, Rafi came to me. We're good neighbors. We've always been good neighbors. Said, "Look, this is the only solution. We have no other way out. One of us has to go." And as Haran said, Rafi's Place is more locational. It's a beautiful space. And he said, "You're an attorney. You can go two blocks away. You still have your practice." Made sense, so we struck a deal. I'm glad to tell you that I probably will move two blocks up. I'm coming to 416 Broadway. We have a tentative agreement there, so my law firm will go there, and I'm sure we'll deal with you on that end as well. I want to thank the GRA group for assisting us, Emile, Mark, everyone that really worked on this project. And we, you know, the motto from the beginning was, "Let's do something that's good for the city, good for Rafi's, and enhance public safety, public security." The old security building will come there, adding to the pedestrian traffic there. My understanding is a few hundred new people will come in there. There is a condo project right behind the old security building that'll add to that, again, to the flow of traffic. So I think it's a win-win-win for everyone. I have to be inconvenienced, but since I found my workable solution, we'll deal with that. I thank you for taking the time. Again, I thank the GRA group for everything they've done in making the project a viable and workable project. Are there any questions? I'll be glad to answer.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Rolfalian. I'm sure there may be.
Okay.
Our next speaker is Herbert Milano.
Am I excused?
Well, you might want to remain to see if there are questions.
I will.
After we hear the speakers.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor.
Good afternoon.
My name is Herbert Milano. I'm not the plaintiff in this case, but nonetheless, I did want to say that there is a level of admiration that we can all have for Rafi and his restaurant. I've, we have some commonalities. Some of the workmen have done work for me for many years, has done work for him as well. So they all tell me how he started and how he grew his business, and I think that entrepreneurial spirit is something that I find quite admirable. I'm here to speak, not necessarily in the design, but rather on the type of questions that I love to see this body ask in the future. Whenever there is a parking variance granted, but oftentimes, I don't hear, or generally what I don't hear, is the other variances that have been given in the surrounding areas. So the DPS's building is nearby, or whatever the new project from Amiri. There is additional construction, so we lost a parking space right, you know, right behind the apartment building that is, I believe, also owned by Rafi. There is additional construction that is taking place on Broadway. And when you begin to add all of these different variances that have been granted, it would be nice to know what the overall impact cumulative, and to have a disclosure of all of these variances that have been accumulated to now. Because the usual answer that I hear is, "Well, we got the parking structure, they can go there." Or, "We have the orange parking structure, they can go there." And at some point in time, someone has to measure where we are with regard to the capacity at different times of the day. There is nearby a residential area. It's not very large, but, you know, this is not far away from where my building is either. And eventually, all of these variances would cause future clients and customers to be taking up those spaces all along, and eventually, it cascades all the way down to what the major residential areas are. It is something that I would like to see, as far as a disclosure with regard to maybe 500 feet or 1,000 feet out, with regard to all of the variances that have been granted, you know, in the past, because then you find that an entity that has served Glendale for such a long time may find itself significantly constrained in their wishes to move forward. I believe that we need a major disclosure every time a project like this comes forward that adds up, you know, all of those variances that have been given, you know, and all the prior justifications that have been given for the prior variances, so that in the future, people would know what the impacts would be, or the alternatives that they're going to have, or the additional costs when there is a particular change in the area. Simple. I'm not here to talk against the project. I'm here to talk about the process in which we grant variances, you know, again and again, without seeing the overall encompassing approach that we're taking towards, you know, the shortage of parking, which is expensive to build. So anyway, those are my comments, and I hope that you take that into consideration and request that kind of information.
Thank you, Mr. Milano. If that is the last of the speaker cards, I will, I'm sorry, yes, Mr. Quintero.
Can you take the picture down, Dan?
Yeah, I was going to ask if we could take the display down so we can see. Thank you.
See the victims.
And I will close the public hearing. All right. Mr. Quintero.
All right. I'm in full support of the proposal, and I just want to comment that as I travel throughout the state or the region, it's very interesting when I'm introduced as a Glendale city councilman, how often the person that I'm introduced to says, "Oh, that's where Porto's located," or they say, "Oh, that's where Rafi's Place is." As recently as a couple of days ago, or I guess last week, Wednesday or Thursday, at a meeting down in Cerritos, I met an elected official, I forget if he was from Paramount or somewhere in that southeast region of Los Angeles, and he said, "Oh, Rafi's Place." He actually mentioned, I said, "You mean you go to Rafi's Place?" And he said, "Yes, I love the steak." So this, like Porto's, is kind of an iconic location that I think draws a regional clientele, not just, and it goes for me. When I have relatives from out of state, or friends, or whatever, 95% of the time, we take them to Rafi's and impress them with our, with our choice of restaurants. So I've been going there for many, many years. I think all of Glendale goes there on a regular basis, and I'm very happy that they're going to expand. I like the design of the building. I think the architect, who's an excellent architect, former DRB member, he's done a great job of designing this to kind of make it fit, and also, the alley redesign is, I think, going to work very well, because right now, it is next to impossible to get in and out of there, or even to, I always park at the parking structure. Even walking into the restaurant from the alley is not particularly attractive. So I think this redesign is going to be a great, is going to be a great idea, and in fact, it works with the downtown specific plan, which is calling for more and more pedestrian use of the alley. And then finally, I'm very happy to hear that the law firm is going to continue here in Glendale, because they have, they're almost as much of an institution as Rafi's is, but they are very active in the nonprofit world and in civic activities, and so I'm very happy that they're going to relocate. And sometimes, when I drive down Broadway, I see one of the principals in the firm sitting outside, so I don't know if he's, if he's talking to clients or not. But anyway, this is a win for everyone concerned. And on one of the speaker's questions, I would like to have, I would like to catalog some of the exceptions that have been given for parking as these different businesses have come in. I think that's a good idea. But there are two parking structures readily available for the business, and they are going to have valet parking, so I'm just looking forward to the new Rafis. I just hope you don't have to close for too long a period. I hope you can keep a few, keep a few tables, a few tables open. But congratulations to both owners. I think this is a great, a great situation for both.
Right. Mr. Weaver.
Well, Mr. Quintero, as you know, I was born and raised here, and I've never eaten at Rafi's.
Oh, man, you don't know what you're missing.
Yeah. Okay. Having said that, I've walked by Rafi's countless times over the years, and I'm just amazed at the growth and the success. Every time I seem to look in there, it's crowded. I remember when Porto's was a little hole in the wall, and Raoul and Betty Porto were little kids, and what they've accomplished. Now, just today, we find out they're going to open a new Porto's down in Downey, at the 5 and 605. We just got an email on it five minutes ago. So I think they said they generate 160 million a year in revenue. Amazing, from that little hole in the wall. Should have made better friend of the parents. But Rafi's, as another institution, has just done so extremely well, unbelievably well. I absolutely will support it. However, Mr. Milano echoed exactly what my concern is. This is just me. It's my own personal opinion. Remember what I'm saying. If staff likes a project, they simply say, "Grant the variance on the parking." If they don't, they give us all the reasons why we shouldn't grant it. Seen it on brand. I've seen it everywhere. Staff likes this. So all of a sudden, with no traffic analysis, no, no report that says, "Who has already got parking spaces in the exchange of the park, or the Orange Street Garage? Go ahead, there's plenty of room." It's only 27 anyhow. But staff is doing, at least they're doing this engineer to service of not giving me a report and saying, "What are the cumulative impacts? We have the, oh, the, what's the name of it? Next to the church, the banquet hall that's going in. They've got exceptions into Orange Street Garage. We have a condo complex coming in just north on, what is it, on Louise? Parking exceptions." Parking exceptions, parking exceptions all over the place. I don't know what the cumulative is. Mr. Milano's right, Mr. Quintero's right. Staff thinks they like it or don't like it, give us the information. It just says staff likes it. So I really am frustrated with that. But I'm going to vote for it because we'll let the traffic work its way out. It's a mess, it's a mess. But Rafi's is too good not to let it expand in that location. It'll help even further to activate Broadway as you approach brand. I figure someday Circuit City will go out of business, that'd be another perfect restaurant, opening up that corner that's now closed down. The project I didn't vote for. And with the new condos coming up on Broadway, more customers for you, I mean, it just gets people on the street more. So I fully support it.
Okay.
With the revisions.
With the revisions, okay. Thank you, Mr. Weaver. Mr. Najarian.
Well, I, I don't want to date myself, but when I was a, were underpaid employee of the district attorney's office across the street, I would oftentimes go to Rafi's place. And that was 1983 and it was just a little corner and they served hot dogs. The owner was Rafi, Hofseppian, I believe. So I would nominate this location to have the same status as the Doctor's House, the home which was owned by a series of doctors. What we have is Rafi's Place, which has been owned by a series of Rafi's.
Does that mean they're moving to Brand Library?
We'll keep them here for now. And I think, you know, the real issue at hand, obviously they serve great food, it's a great location, but the issue at hand is whether we want to give them the parking exceptions. And if you've been to Rafi's place, the first thing you'll notice, once I became a city official, was regardless of what day it was during the week, I would see at least two to three tables of city employees filling up Rafi's. I would see other attorneys that I know who have offices on brand or on Central at Rafi's. So what that's telling me is that there's a large amount of pedestrian traffic coming to that location. It's not, I don't think it needs the type of parking that a typical, perhaps, other geographically located restaurant would need. Lot of walk-in, in traffic. They are going to have valet parking spaces in the back, which can be very ingeniously configured, as we've all seen some valet before. It's like a, what's the name of that puzzle? Changa or Tenga, where, where the cars are, are very creatively parked to fit as many as they can. So I'm sure the first priority is going to be to fill as many of those spots there. So even though on paper it may have only eight, I'm sure that in reality that's going to be almost double that in terms of the configuration. The style of the buildings are very appropriate. Two concerns I have, number one is, in terms of the CUP, the original restaurant is exempt from a CUP to serve alcohol. Is that correct?
Yes, they, they predate the CUP process.
So do they need a new CUP to carry a, carry a drink across the, just for the expanded portion? And is this a CUP for beer, wine, alcohol, liquor? What are we talking? I've never had a drink at Rafi's place, that's, that's why I'm sort of new to the concept of...
Mr. Chair, it's, it's for onsite sales and consumption.
Of beer and wine?
Mm-hmm.
It's a Type 20?
Or liquor?
And here's, he's got the license.
Does he have hard liquor?
Yes, yes, that's the license, full alcoholic license.
I've never seen anyone drinking hard liquor. Okay? I guess I'm not enjoying the full.
Please.
Sure.
One of the new feature, features of the new restaurant, Chairman Najarian, is going to be an expanded waiting area for the clients, including a small bar where you would have a pleasure now of, of being able to order a drink. There is a kitchenette or a kitchen, prep kitchen on the right-hand side next to the toilets. If you recall, that is going to be vacated and turned into an expanded waiting area with a small bar.
Okay. And along with the CUP, we have some conditions and condition number one is a condition that we've grappled with many, many times. And I just want to make sure that you have the wording down correctly, that there's no misinterpretation. We've been to court on this, we've won some, we've lost some, we've had confusion, frustration. 30% of the days, or seven days a week, 30% of the space, or 30% of the tables. Is that, I mean, is this clear and is it clear to the, to the applicant, to Rafi, that this is what we all mean and there's no misunderstanding about what the restrictions and conditions are?
This is the condition that we've been using. It's consistent with prior conditions that we've imposed for similar CUPs. It includes the definition of full-service restaurant from our code. And as part of that definition, it says that such restaurant shall have less than 30% of the serving area available for private party rental where access by the general public is restricted. So that's directly out of the code, it's a measured area. It's not, it's, it's 30% of the serving area. So you measure the square footage.
Which, I mean, I know you, you can say that it's clear and I could say that it's clear, but this particular provision has led to a lot of misunderstanding and hard feelings between people and the applicants and the city and zoning code enforcement agents, so. I just want it to be clear, whatever you're intending is clear with Rafi, that you understand specifically when you're talking about 30% of the service area at any one time, as opposed to as an average, you know, seven days a week, we've got seven times 20,000 square feet available, I'll just take 30% of that, you know? So there's no confusion or any misinterpretation of the restrictions. That's, that's my only request. I know we don't want it to be a banquet hall, we want there to be some private party usage, I'm fine with that, but let's not get into a confusion at the very outset as to what the restrictions are.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Chairman, as much as an answer as clarification for the record, we did talk to the applicant about that just before. We talked about the reason why, so that everybody was aware, it was 30% of the service area, so that you could not make this a banquet hall. The response was, "That's fine, the, the building does not lend itself for that, that's not our intention." And if that's a different understanding, they come here, but I see them nodding their heads.
So long as there's no misunderstandings. I'm happy with that then, I'm happy with the parking issues, I'm happy with the facade and looking forward to my next lunch then.
Okay. Thank you. Due to the hour, I'm going to make my comments very brief. I'm not going to repeat anything that my colleagues have already said. Oddly enough, I've never seen anybody drinking there either, but I don't think I ever have either, short of soft drink or iced tea. Anyway...
National regular.
Can't remember. Anyway, I just wanted to mention that I am extremely happy with the design. I know that's been mentioned before, but it's very good-looking and I think it, it really does bring some continuity of design to that whole frontage there. So that's, that's terrific. And I'm happy that once in a while we can actually solve a problem or two, instead of creating a problem or two. And it seems like that's what we're doing. I'm not so concerned about the parking in this particular issue. I, in this particular case, I have been to this restaurant, I don't know how many times, I have never, I mean, that's during, long before being elected to office, I don't think I've ever driven to the location. I think I've always been at some sort of a meeting or conducting some kind of a business where I've walked. And I think that is my observation as well, Councilmember or Chair Najarian, that, that most of the people I see there are, are conducting other business in the city and they've walked over to sit down to have a lunch or, or a dinner. I'm not that concerned about it and it seems that the usable restaurant floor space anyway is going to fall within the, at the limits of the available parking minus, or when you factor in the parking credit anyway. So I'm not concerned about that in this case. So I am prepared to support this. Mr. Weaver.
Okay, I can move 1A for the agency as-is, right? It's B and C that are, have the revisions? Or is it...
1A is as revised.
Okay, I'll move 1A as revised.
Second. Excuse me, let me clarify something. 1A is as revised and 1B is as-is?
Is, and 1, and 1C for the council is as revised.
Is as revised, okay.
For the agency.
So are you making A and B together? Or do they need to be separated?
You, you can move as the agency, A and B together, but noting that 1A...
As revised.
So moved, so moved.
Second.
Okay, roll call please for the agency.
Agency members, Draymond?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Hofseppian?
Chairman Najarian?
Yes.
I'll move 1C as revised.
As revised. Second.
Mr. Kusakian, if you would, for the council.
Councilmembers Najarian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Hofseppian?
Mayor Draymond?
Yes.
Will we adjourn for the agency?
Yes, Mr. City Manager.
One.
Sorry. I do want to point out, Mr. Landisfama informs me that although not included in your report, traffic staff did review this use and the recommended parking exception to ensure that the impact on either of the two garages possibly impacted would be acceptable. Two, I do want to point out that the major projects in particular, Armenian Relief Society, DPS, College, all had extensive traffic engineering review with the report to you. And you might recall the 85 percentile level that we assessed in the Market Street Garage. Whether large or small, traffic's always consulted, they always do a review as to the impact on the associated garage. And we will continue, we will include that even on the smaller project and should have been included here. But we do that assessment, we'll ensure it's included in your report in future.
Since these are always such a strenuous issue with us, we should have them.
I completely agree. I, I do want to point out though, you know, liking or disliking a project isn't the basis on which we do a review or don't do a review. Traffic's always consulted, they always do the review. We'll ensure it's included in your report so you don't have the impression that somehow there's not a review being done.
Thank you, Mr. Starber.
Armenian Society of LA, not Armenian.
Yes, pardon me, you're right, no, you're right.
Yep. All right, we had a motion to adjourn.
For the agency.
The agency.
Second.
Agency is adjourned.
For the city council.
Second.
We are adjourned, thank you.
Now we go to closed session.
Now we will go back to closed session on housing.